Welcome. This is the Planning Board Hybrid Meeting, November 25, 2024. This is 5:00 PM. I have a few notes to read. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023, Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting, while in progress, may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 458608249, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, formerly Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting at the town's website as soon as possible. With that, I'd like to begin with the roll call. Catherine Halpern.
Present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Werschaffter.
Bob Werschaffter, present.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, present.
Frank Shear.
Frank Shear, present.
Bob Dubas.
Bob Dubas, present.
And Art Spruill, I'm present. And I'd like to ask any of the board members if they have to recuse themselves from anything on the agenda tonight. The Chair needs to recuse himself for 170 Vineyard Avenue. This abuts a common area of my association, which I'm on the board for. So I will step down from this, and Catherine will take the lead on it. Let's begin with the minutes on October 28, 2024. Do any board members have any comments or questions on the minutes? With that.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the October 28, 2024, meeting minutes.
I second that motion.
With that, take a roll call vote. Catherine Halpern.
I agree.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschaffter.
Abstain.
That's right.
I'm abstaining.
Yep. Charlene Greenholt.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
Approve.
Bob Dubas.
Bob Dubas, approve.
And Art Spruill, I approve. All right, so the first item on our, next item on our agenda is a request for release of bond for 75 Gillis Road. Is there an applicant present or online? And if you could introduce yourself and give us some background on this.
Sure. This is Marilyn Mormon Gillis and my husband, Jack Gillis. And we are the applicants for the release of the $4,000 construction bond associated with the construction of our house, 75 Gillis Road.
Okay. So what this has to do is, I think we've, many of the board members have heard this request, I think it was back in 2021.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I think the issue was there were two items that had to be addressed. The first item was, the second one had to do with lot releases for 3, 7, 8, and 9, and that there needed to be improvements made to Gillis Road prior to those lot releases. So that's what initiated this activity back in 2021. Any of the board members have any questions about this application?
No. Mr. Chair, I do remember the procedure back in 2021, and we decided to, that road improvement was required, and that's when we required the $4,000 bond. That now they're requesting to release, and I believe you mentioned that you did inspect it, and it looks like everything has been accomplished. Is that correct?
I did take a look at this, and it's a significant improvement from what I remember in 2021. So it's passable. It looks like it's a real sound base on there, so I commend the applicant for the work that they've done. If there aren't any more questions, we should take a vote on the release of this bond.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we release the construction surety in the amount of $4,000 plus any interest accrued in full.
And a second, anybody?
A second.
Okay, roll call vote. Catherine Halpern.
I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschaffter.
Bob Werschaffter, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Frank Shear.
Frank Shear, approve.
Bob Dubas.
Uh, I approve. I know both of them.
And Art Spruill, I approve. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next agenda item is one that I have to recuse myself on, so I'll step down.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item is a request for recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding a driveway in a conservancy district, and this is located at 170 Vineyard Avenue. You do have some pretty thorough notes from your staff report. I'm just going to make a couple of comments. I always request my usual request, that we just have a very clear site plan of before and after, what the driveway was before and what the driveway, proposed driveway is. And I do have a colored copy. I think all of you received a colored copy, and I believe the blue outline is the existing conditions, the existing driveway, and the green is the proposed driveway.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, Christine. And just a reminder to the board, in this case, the planning board's purview is limited to the driveway in a conservancy district, so our vote would be our usual vote, whether or not we would send a positive or negative recommendation regarding the driveway in the conservancy district to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we usually include our standard condition that the driveway shall be constructed of permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. In this case, the total square footage of the driveway is being reduced and also is being consigned, confined to the site. Previously, it did extend into the abutting property. So are there any questions on this matter? Any other comments from the public or the applicant? In that case, I would propose that we send a positive recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals with regards to this driveway in the conservancy district with our standard condition. May I have a motion to that effect?
Also move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschaffter.
Bob Werschaffter, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Frank Shear.
Frank Shear, approve.
Bob Dubas.
Bob Dubas, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. Thank you very much. And we'll welcome our Chair to return for the next matter.
Okay, the next item is actually site plan approval. It's actually a change of use for 216B Orleans Road. Is there someone present, find the applicant? Can you please come up and introduce yourself and give us some background?
Hi, I'm Jill Sanderson.
I'm Jen Hart, mom, daughter.
Okay.
We are trying to open a childhood enrichment center with caregiver support. This would be a place where children can come with their caregiver. We would offer music classes, different fun science classes, a chance for mothers and caregivers to connect. Eventually, we'd like to bring in things like lactation support and postpartum and
Nutrition.
Nutrition, all sorts of things. We're really looking at this sort of being like a community hub. So we are proposing right now it is under a office use, and I think that we're in a very unique situation because it hasn't been done before, so the change of use piece, we're being creative.
Okay, good.
Okay. First, I'd like to just ask for a clarification from Christine. I didn't see any information in our packet about a previous site plan approval on this. Did you find?
That is correct. We did find something after the fact, after the reports were sent out. It was actually for 210 Orleans Road. 216 is under that same umbrella. It was a number of different units with a number of different addresses. So there has been a site plan review for this. There have been an amendment for this app, this site as well. We've had a couple of things, starting in 1984, 1997, and again in 2010. So this is a continuation of something that has been done on this site.
Okay. Like to make a note, there's been many submissions of support for this from the, from the public. I don't plan on reading them all, but when there's a change of use, it does initiate a full review if it's necessary on this. I think the board need to make their judgment on this, but the site is fairly well-developed. I've been out there. There hasn't been many changes on this. I think there's a few things we usually ask when there's a change of use. Is there a change in the parking criteria on this? And has the site addressed storm owner management, things like that? I asked Christine to provide us with the list of criteria in case the board members have any questions they'd like to ask the applicant or ask for clarification. So why don't I just ask Catherine, do you have any that you would like to ask for clarification on this?
Yeah, thank you, Art. Actually, I do. I wanted to know, mostly my questions are about our site plan review criteria, number one and number two, adequacy and arrangement of vehicular traffic access and circulation, including intersections, road widths, pavement surfaces, dividers, and traffic controls. And number two is adequacy and arrangement of pedestrian traffic access and circulation, walkway structures, control of intersections with vehicular traffic, and overall pedestrian convenience. Mostly my question, I wanted to know, particularly with regard to safety, since you're dealing with young children, we do need to look at how people and vehicles move around the site to be sure that everything is safe. Sometimes we might request some additional markings, you know, that you go this way and you can park here, something like that. But could you show us on the site plan, you did mention that you'd be having some outdoor activities for the youngsters, and we wanted to know where that was? And also, where do the adults and youngsters enter your facility? Where do they exit, and where would they park? So we can kind of see how they would move through the site and see if there's any conflicts.
If you could use the laser pointer that's there.
That's so funny. When I was here on the zoning board, I thought the lawyer brought it. Very official. Thank you.
If you could start with by showing us where on this plan your unit is, 216B?
Yep, sure. So we are, I should have brought my mic, sorry. So we are.
You gotta use the mic.
Up there.
These are on the, yeah, we're right here. So we're tucked into this alcove.
Okay.
Which actually is great, because it does give us kind of that, that small little buffer to get in. It's not labeled. Sorry. So we are right here. This is the grass area. This is sidewalk. So what we would like to eventually do and is have little music classes here. There's natural hedging, which is wonderful, just like when they did music classes at the library, at Eldridge Public Library. I don't know if you remember, but they use the natural barriers. They're wonderful. We love them very much. So we're going to really look to the natural barriers. I am a mother. I have a three-year-old, very busy boy, and a four-and-a-half-year-old daughter. So I do understand the safety concerns 100%. We are really lucky. These spots right here say Nicholson Corners only, as well as these ones right here.
Okay.
There are 62 spots in the lot that I counted, and we will have a maximum of eight children at a time. We're looking at five to eight children because it is only 400 square feet, so we're thinking about 50, 50 square feet per child. That was sort of the recommendation of what people I've been talking to. So we would only need nine cars.
Okay.
And right now, what happens is the traffic flow goes in, and then there's a one-way sign right here. So the traffic flow has to go around here and then park up. Does that make sense?
It does. So your clients or your attendees will park, show us where they will park, where they will walk to get into your facility?
Yep.
And how they will walk back, and how they will exit to go to the outdoor play area.
Thank you. So we will not, we're not going to have like an outdoor play area per se. It would just be as if we had, if it was a beautiful day and we wanted to bring the guitar outside for our music class.
But where would that be?
That would be right here.
Okay, and they're just exits directly from your building?
Yes.
So they don't have to go into the parking area at all?
No, no, no. So we would ask cars to enter through the main lot, which I think they would do naturally. And there's the one-way sign, so then they would go around, which I actually really like because that's going away from the space. So they're going to go around this way, and there are lots of signs, because the post office is right here, that do indicate slow down, you know, it's not, it's not a high-velocity area. And then we'll go around the corner, and we're going to ask to park here or park in here.
Okay, and then how would they walk to get into your, show how they would walk to get into your?
They would exit their vehicle here, and then this is all sidewalk. You can see the paved part. This is sidewalk, so they'd walk down the sidewalk and in through the space.
Great. So that's very safe.
It is very safe.
They don't have to walk in the other areas of the parking lot to get to your door?
What I really love, too, is the parking lot is actually on our side, so they don't even need to cross the whole area. It's very, and like I said, the natural barriers are super helpful.
Great. Okay, that was, that was my question.
Okay, Warren, do you have any questions, comments?
Yes, when I was out there, I saw where the front entrance was, and that's what you're describing there, but it also appears that there is a back entrance. Would that ever be used?
No, that's no, no. No, but there is a back entrance, which is important for safety because there are two egresses. So that's, that's very important.
But I just wanted to clarify, it would be, because you're parking in a different space, and then the entrance, if you're going in the back door,
Yep.
depending on where you park, might be the door you'd want to use.
Right.
In which case, it raises the same questions that Catherine was raising.
Thank you.
I did not have a way to determine all of the positive comments, or exactly where they came from. Most seem to be from neighbors, and very much in favor of this. But do have the question, to the extent that there are outdoor activities in the common space for this development, which is businesses. Question, what is your feeling with respect to your outdoor activities right in the middle of a business zone with respect to the patrons for those other businesses? They may not be crazy about walking through whatever you're doing out there.
Singing children.
Singing, dancing children.
Children. It would be very, very limited. It might be a one, one-day-a-week, 45-minute music class. And obviously, if there's a problem, we just wouldn't do it.
Yeah, we wouldn't do it.
We just wouldn't do it.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you so much.
Bob Werschaffter.
I have no other questions.
Sure, please.
Charlene.
I have no questions. I think this is a wonderful idea.
Thank you.
Frank Shear.
I have no questions. It's just, I agree. It's a great, great project.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. It's much needed. There's nothing on this end of the Cape like this.
Oh, I don't know. I might have a lot of problems. Gee, I think, I think, I think my great-great-grandchildren might want to go there.
You're welcome anytime.
I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I do not have any comments or questions on this. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
With that, we need to make a motion to approve the change of use for this application.
I move that we approve the change of use because the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to protective zoning by law.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Catherine Halpern. Oh, I'm sorry, second. Bob Werschaffter. Roll call vote. Catherine Halpern.
I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschaffter.
Bob Werschaffter, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Frank Shear, approve. And Bob Dubas.
Bob Dubas approves.
And Art Spruill, I approve.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. This can be great.
Good luck. Yeah, it's a good project.
Thank you.
It's great.
Pass order.
Yes.
About not too much over.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the West Chatham Neighborhood Center discussion. I think I would like to begin the discussion on this tonight and give you some perspective on what I heard over the last couple of meetings. I'm interested in what the board has to say about this, but I, I think I'd like to introduce a couple of things that I observed on this and see if that's something that the other board members think are important. I believe Town Council is going to join us and, oh, okay, Town Council is here. Oh, that's good. I would say over the last couple of weeks or so, there's been two pieces of information that we've been introduced to and received, and I think it's important to just flush those out a little bit, because I think they do have an impact on where we are today. The first one is the build-out analysis that was done, that, and the, and the second one is the DPW infrastructure capacity of the build-out analysis. So when, when you look at the build-out analysis that we saw on, I think, not just the 18th, I think it was on the 26th of October, I, I saw a lot more building and residential components of a site than I was expecting to see. When I was looking at this, I was thinking that we needed to have a good balance between commercial and residential. And I think there's two things that were, were driving that, from what I observed. One is we did make adjustments several times about what kind of density we wanted. And secondly, we did start with a certain minimum with how much commercial development we wanted to see in relationship to residential on a particular site. But we dropped that provision, I don't know, about a year or so ago. And once I saw that visual, I said, what kind of flexibility do we have as a board to make sure that there's a good balance? And I'm not sure there is without a certain amount of percentage of commercial. So that, I thought, we, we should go back and revisit that and put a certain minimum in. And I, I'm not defining what that would be, but I think that we need to come up with some sort of a balance on that. Because if it's more residential than commercial, I think that that is not the objective of what we are looking for. We're looking for a village center, and a village center, this is not a resident, residential housing project. It's a village center which require, which calls for mixed use. The other thing that I think we all received in our packets was some information from the DPW. They looked at the build-out analysis from BSC, and they looked, and they used eight units per acre as a build-out number. And they identified, there's two aspects to their sewer infrastructure. One is the gravity systems, and another is the pump stations. Now, they indicated in the gravity systems that they could handle that flow. The problem is, is the pump stations, neither of the pump stations can handle that increased volume of flow. That, that's a significant issue because that means there are limitations that we need to look at and revisit and see, is there something that we need to do different to make sure that we're not pushing the limit on what we have for our current infrastructure? You got to remember, this is infrastructure that is being built out for the entire town. There's hundreds of millions of dollars that are being invested in this, and we need to make sure that some of the things that we're proposing as part of zoning will support and are consistent with that. So I think that when it comes down to these two identifiers, one, I think we should revisit the minimum amount of commercial that we should have in here, and then take a look at what is it that should be consistent on density to support the, and be consistent with the infrastructure limitations that we have. I don't think we want to come out on a block in here and say, well, we're just going to do this much density because this is what our desire is. I think we have to be realistic on this and not put in an additional burden on our town's infrastructure. And we're not quite sure if there is, you know, they, they have a whole program that they're doing, and for them to come back and revisit this without a whole program that they're doing, and for them to come back and revisit this without, without us actually considering the ramifications of it, I think that's an important thing. So, I would like to get some of the board's input on some of the things I observed, and also, any things that you picked up on these two pieces of information, because I think this is a critical juncture for us. If we can deal with these couple of things, I think we can move ahead on this. It's, it's important that we resolve this as a board, and we're somewhat in agreement on this, so that we can actually get to the next couple of pieces. I'd like to see Union Studios with what their vision would be on, on the type of density that we think is gonna be realistic in here. I don't think it's realistic to show a Union Studio illustration on something of a full build-out analysis, because that's probably not realistic in most of these sites, anyway. So, I, my initial thoughts on this, I, I don't mean to make a decision on your part, but I think it's important that we identify these things and deal with it as a board before we really take too many steps forward on this. I'd like to go down and ask for each of your input on this.
Can I ask for one thing first?
Sure.
I don't know if Attorney Tellerman was ready to have a discussion about if he has any concerns from a lawyer's standpoint, Town Council's standpoint, with what we've produced so far.
Well, I, this is going to change things if the board decides that we have an infrastructure limitation issue, all right? Say, I mean, the, the DPW did a analysis of eight units, not even the 12. I'm not sure that the 12 is, is a realistic goal at all now, and whether the eight is, is appropriate. So, that could change an awful lot of things. So, for example, if we decide that even the eight is too much, and we're just gonna go down to what we started with, way back when, which is, you know, five units per acre, we're back to not having an impact on the infrastructure, and we don't even have to deal with the bonus issue. So, there's a lot of things that could fall into place, or not, not be an item, depending on where we're gonna go with the board, with the board on this.
And, may I comment, Mr. Chair? Yeah, in other words, I think what's being said is that we are at some decision points, we've done our due diligence, we've gotten some important information in the build-out analysis, and also the DPW assessment, but, but our discussion tonight may actually change what input we, we would need from Town Council. So, it might be more effective to go ahead with that discussion, and we're very happy that Town Council has joined us, and he'll be listening in. And then, based on our discussion, we may ask for, we may have some questions for our Town Council. Do you think that's accurate, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
Do you have any thoughts associated with what I introduced here?
Yeah, thank you so much. I'd just like to express my agreement with what you've said. I think we've gotten some important information that does, in a sense, force us to reassess what we're doing. I've been involved in this process of developing the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning for all of the 10 years that it's been in process, and the purpose of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center is to implement the principles of the comprehensive plan for the neighborhood centers. In that time period, over that 10 years, we have experienced a significant housing crisis on Cape Cod, in Chatham, statewide, nationwide, actually worldwide. I think in response to that housing crisis, the board wanted to create zoning that emphasized the residential piece of the neighborhood center zoning, but I agree with our chair that it was never the vision of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning to be primarily a residential project, and never the vision of West Chatham Neighborhood zoning to be a housing project, per se. Because it is mixed use, it is intended to be a vibrant commercial center with mixed-use buildings that will, by the nature of the case, provide a diversity of housing options, just because if you have an apartment alongside a commercial building, or above, or you have smaller residential structures, it will provide more of a diversity of housing options for all income levels. So, so it's a piece of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning, it is a piece of what is required or asked for in the comprehensive plan for the neighborhood centers, but it has never been the primary piece of any neighborhood center zoning that we've worked on. So, it was rather a surprise to see the build-out analysis where it's almost entirely residential, the residential is completely separate from the commercial, the commercial is just along Route 28, in one-story buildings. I think this is not what we've envisioned for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center aesthetically, or in terms of livability, or in terms of being a vibrant, commercial, and residential mixed-use neighborhood center. So, I think the build-out analysis did reveal that if the build-out analysis was very closely based on the way the bylaw is drafted now, I agree with our chair that we need to look back at the wording in the bylaw, and maybe reintroduce some things that we took out, like, like asking for a, more of a mix of commercial and residential through all the zones, the A zones and the B zones, and so on, because we want to create an aesthetically pleasing, mixed-use neighborhood center. So, I also just would remind everyone, I'd want to remind everyone that we do, and this by no means is against our efforts to increase the housing available in Chatham, and to allow for a diversity of housing options, but the board also, we have on our to-do list, on our agenda, some other zoning initiatives that may be more amenable to creating more units of housing that we require. One of those zoning initiatives is the buffer zones, or transition zones, on the east side, and even the west side of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and potentially other neighborhood centers, where we could introduce zoning, we could propose zoning, that would allow a greater density of housing, and smaller housing structures, but would omit the commercial piece that we have in the neighborhood center. And that may be a better opportunity to introduce zoning that will allow for greater number of units of housing. There are also a couple of 40Bs, friendly 40Bs, in process. Those are more, you know, on the, on the ground, getting ready to go. There are also some town-wide housing initiatives in zoning that previously our Housing Director, Gloria McPherson, has mentioned to us that we could begin to look at, that also will offer more opportunities to create zoning that encourages diversity in housing options. It's just that, we don't want to look to the neighborhood centers to being our only chance, or we don't get any housing. Just a reminder, there are supposed to be mixed-use developments that are aesthetically attractive and livable. So, those would be my comments, I might think of a few more later, but I think the suggestions our chair has made of reconsidering the density, also reconsidering how we, how we disperse the commercial and residential uses throughout all of the zones, all of the, what do we call them, sections or areas within the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, the A and B zones, I think are, are things we do need to reconsider now, in light of the information we received in the build-out analysis, and in DPW's infrastructure impact analysis. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Warren? Any comments?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I think it's very important that we try and have a very clear response and answer to those, other than on the board, that have raised, and will raise, the issues that you're raising. Because if we don't, it doesn't matter what we decide to do, we have to have, be very compelling and persuasive to the voters. And the questions you're raising are quite legitimate. But I, I had a few comments here, which I'll try and direct, and given what you have said, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The first things that, that I made a note, when we had our, our, our presentation by the consultants, were that they really never determined, they weren't focused on the number of bedrooms, so it's the number of units. All right, okay. Well, that's not the way DPW looks at things, or the way that the town tends to look at things, and so, to me, it's still a question mark, regardless of whether it's their eight units, or 12 units, or 200 or 300 units to be added to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, doesn't really address, or can't tie back into the kind of zoning that we are going to draft for, with respect to the actual expected water and sewer flows. So, that's one. Also, it's my understanding that the build-out analysis that was really being updated was done for, really, the entire 28 corridor, and at four units per acre, as I recall. And the sewage, the sewer capacity of the town, I assume, has been developed with the idea of being able to handle the flow that resulted from that build-out analysis. But since that build-out analysis, much of the Route 28 corridor has been rezoned to R20, or R40, R20, I guess it is. And therefore, there's gonna be less demand on the rest of Route 28, which ought to be an offset to whatever extra demand is coming from the DPW comments today. I'm not arguing that, other than, we need to know what that is, so we know what the net is. It does seem odd to me that if the DPA had no problem with the build-out analysis of four per unit on the entire corridor-
It, it wasn't on the entire corridor, I don't think. I think it was just on West Chatham Neighborhood Center.
Yeah, I, I think the DPW director said, the gravity systems can handle that flow, but because we're so flat, everything goes to a pump station, from there it gets pumped to another point, and that was the weak, that was the weak link.
The rest of 28 doesn't, all right.
Yeah, that was the weak link, they said, is, is that their pump stations do not have that capacity. Now, I don't know what that means from the standpoint, can you just replace a pump? Do you have to replace the whole, whole system? It's not something that you can just make a simple adjustment on, so I, I'd have to rely on that part of it. But it, the gravity system, they did say, once it gets into the line that's in 28, it's not, that's not the issue, it's the next point in the, in the, in their system.
Again, I'm basically agreeing with you, but at the same time, saying, if I put my hat on as a voter-
Yeah.
-I've got these questions, which aren't answered by anything that I read in their report-
Yeah.
-and need to be answered. The other item, which really wasn't brought up, at least if I, if it was, I missed it in their, the DPW report, was the impact of the 40B developments that are close to, and have a significant number of units in them, that were not presumed or considered, I think, in any previous analysis of the demand on the sewer systems in that general part of town. And so, it remains, you know, that's gonna be 100-plus units for those two 40Bs. I don't know what the numbers are gonna end up as, but it's gonna be a significant more than 100 units.
Not all in one location, though, it's in two separate locations.
No, I understand that.
That, that makes a difference on the infrastructure.
I understand that, but my only point is, there are a whole lot of housing units that have nothing to do with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and all of our considerations, but they're in the same general part of town. And do they have an impact on the capacity of the system? I don't know.
I think, I think that's a question.
That's a question that you need to, we need to have an answer to.
I would agree.
And, let's see, what else? Well, yeah, whether there's a way to get it to a number of bedrooms, it might be appropriate for them to think about it the same way that I always hear about it here. And then, the 40B analysis, as to whether that, and then also, really, your question is, to what extent would, would an issue be resolvable with a bigger pump, or this, that, and the other, in the future? Because, again, what we're talking about here is ultimately a build-out, hey, it's gonna take 50, 60 years or so before anything got to the kinds of numbers that they're analyzing for. And by that time, who knows? Everything that is being done now, in terms of pump stations, is gonna have to be updated, replaced, whatever, anyway, in its normal useful life. So, I would, I would think we would also need to know what would happen if, along the way, items needed to be upgraded for capacity, but it was in their normal replacement cycle, so it, it wouldn't be a big deal, put it that way. I don't know whether it would be a big deal. We don't want to be doing something now, which would commit to the town, to major construction projects down the road, that you knew were coming. But it's not clear to me that, given the time it would take to do any full build-out in that area, which I think, I'm gonna say, call it 50 years, might be more than that. And I'm not even sure a full build-out could ever happen, because all of the buildings that are there aren't gonna go away, probably, you know, so-
The rest can't, can't go.
So, at any rate, being, having a handle on what would happen if, in the course of developing this process, this property in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, that, that changes needed to be made. What would they be, and what would they cost, and when would they normally need to be done anyway, just in terms of replacement of mater, of, of, of equipment? All of those things are only, again, by way of agreeing with every objection that you've talked about, from my point of view, which is, we need to know answers to this, because if we don't, and can't therefore explain them to the electorate, then forget it, it doesn't matter what we put forward. I do think some of these things do have responses that may be acceptable, or, and to the extent we need to adjust, then we need to adjust. But that's all, those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob Werschafter?
Yeah, I guess I'm pretty surprised by your reaction. I, I said at the meeting last week that we needed to be careful, that this report is a study as to what the maximum could be, not what we're doing, and, and, and I wanted to make sure that the public didn't get that idea, and yet, here you guys are coming across as though that's the plan that we're dealing with here. It's not, it's just a measure of how many houses we could possibly fit into that space, and nobody is suggesting that we would have that number, or that the design would look like that, or anything else. It was merely a number that we could then give to the Sewer Department, the DPW, to say, okay, can you do that? And they came back and said, no, they can't do it today. But it didn't say, as, as Warren has said, I think they're gonna have to redo, do their plan a little bit, based on those two developments, and I think, if we ask the question, how much additional money would it cost to meet that capacity, it might not be the game-ending thing that you're making out here. So, so my, and, and, and the other point that needs to be made is, we spent an awful lot of time determining what we wanted the, the property, the idea to be, and it was to get enough capacity in there to make it economical for developers to, to have affordable and attainable housing as part of a development, and that's why we ended up with giving the option of 12. Well, a 12 per acre, well, not everybody is gonna do that, that's not the way it is. And, and if everybody jumped on that today, we would have to say, okay, the first ones in have sewer capacity, and the rest of you have to wait until, we, we don't, we have sewer capacity, but it, but realistically, that's just not gonna happen. But the worst thing we could do is say to, well, we're gonna scrap all our ideas to have affordable and attainable housing, and we're just gonna make it five units per acre instead of four, but that's not really gonna solve any of our- per acre instead of four, but that's not really going to solve any of our issues." So I, I, I totally disagree with where that was going. I think we have the right plan. I think we, we can move forward. I, I, I'm more scared that Warren's correct, that whatever we do is going to scare the heck out of everybody because they're going, now they're going to take this as, "Whoa, look at that plan and that's what we're going to be voting on." And that's not what we're voting on, in the, at least not for a very long time. And so, so I, I, I hope we can reframe the, 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 the study that, as to what it really is, it's a maximum study. I think we should get some better plans about what we're, we hope to see it look like. And I agree with you that it doesn't, we hope that it has more commercial, but that's, that probably is how it has to work out economically for developers as well. I don't, I don't know that everybody will want to build just housing units. So, so anyway, I, I, just, let's just take a step back. We have more information now about what, what our limitations are. We, we have a, a study from the Sewage Department Sewers that needs a little bit more refinement, some more questions. We need to know how long it would take to, to change that, how much it would cost, whether there is likely to be upgrades anyway. And I really don't want to, I really don't want to start saying, "Okay, well, we're going to limit it to five per acre." I think that's absolutely not why I'm on this board.
Okay, Charlene, do you have comments?
I want to thank Bob for his comments because I, I, I share greatly what, what he just expressed. Right now, the way the bylaw is written, and I wish I had it in front of me, the Zone A has to have commercial. It has to have commercial. So what happens behind those commercial buildings? Well, okay, let it be residential, if that's what we need. And I think we do need that. And I'm glad Warren brought up, and I, I actually chatted with Catherine after the last meeting and just said, "You know, everything is based on number of bedrooms, not number of units. So let's say we do only allow eight units per, per acre or what have you. Whether it's 16 one bedrooms or eight two-bedroom units, it's still, it's based on bedrooms." And I think, I think we're, we're kind of getting caught up in the unit discussion, quite frankly, because flow is based on bedrooms, not units. So I think we're kind of losing that in the discussion. There are going to be some properties that are going to be able to have, let's say, 20 bedrooms maybe, and the adjoining property maybe can only have six bedrooms. You know, I, I, I'm just throwing that out there. But how those bedrooms are used in the number of units, I think, is going to be the defining factor. In, you know, you're still going to have the same number of bedrooms, you just may have a different configuration of the number of units that are associated with the residential part of the development. But I, I, I tend to agree with Bob, you know, this was, and you actually, I think, used the term at the last meeting, and I cringe, the worst-case scenario. I, I hate that expression because I don't think it is a worst-case scenario. I think it's the maximum scenario that could possibly happen. But quite frankly, I don't think it would ever happen. And it is going to take a number of years. I don't expect to see the end of it. And I'm not saying anything, but I think I'm the youngest person on this board right now. I know how old you are, Bobby. So, I mean, I will never see it in my lifetime. Maybe his grandchildren will, but I, I won't see it in my lifetime. But I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, we're, we're just going to lose what it is we were trying to do in the first place.
Thank you. Frank Scher?
Well, there's, I'm, I'm reluctant for us to get into the weeds of, you know, what does it cost to, how many pumping stations have to be improved? When are they going to be improved, et cetera? What I'd like to see from, is how many bedrooms the, the can be accommodated by the sewer as currently planned, as currently proposed? I think we need to know that, first of all. And then, I don't know what that number is. Maybe it's five, let's say it's five. And then I think we need to know what it, if, if you wanted to go, say, to eight, what the additional cost might be. Granted, it would be over time and, you know, phased and all of that. Or indeed 12, what the additional cost would be. So we have that input. And I think that's all we need to know, frankly, that, that's from, from them. And then I think we should take on the chore of making the assumption of how many are going to be one bedrooms, studios, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, or whatever. I don't think we should put that on, on them. I think we have resources that could come up with that. So that would translate into number of units, et cetera. I, I, I don't have a problem with 12 units per acre, frankly. I think it can be done in, consistent with our, you know, architectural desires for the town, et cetera. And I would be reluctant to back off of that. But I do agree with you, Mr. Chair, that the build out analysis that we have seen and what is going to be used presumably shows, you know, residential in the back, very large, you know, buildings in proportion to the commercial buildings in, in, in front. And there isn't a lot of mixing. So I, I think that, that is a problem. And I, I would like to see something done along those in, in order to make it more integrated, if, if you will. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Bob Dubus?
Mr. Chairman? I, I think that the sewer is part of the, part, part of the thing to find out what the sewer can handle, but I know there's room for growth on it. So that's not the biggest problem that I, I can see is, is, as, as they build or somebody builds structures and, and absorbs some of the sewer flow and more sewer flow and more sewer flow, the whole town is going to be absorbing sewer flow. My biggest concern is the water that feeds the sewers, that that's going to be a problem. As we expand, we need water, drinkable water. That is one of the problems that, that the town is just starting to envelop. And they're about 10 years late, I believe. So we can have the sewer, but we need the water to flow. And I, I believe there's enough expansion and over time, they're going to have to improve the pumping stations. They always have. We're just starting to do Mill Pond. We did, we did 28 in Oyster Pond for a long, Oyster Pond Road there. So over time, they're going to expand it, expand it. And they'll have to maybe lay more pipe, a bigger pipe around the perimeter, not 28, but around the perimeter to get to, to the site as we expand, expand that. So some of the problem is the water flow. We need to concentrate at least some effort to see what's going on with the water. Right now, they're building that station in Training Field Road. Hopefully, that'll take care of that area. We were a little short on expanding the building in South Chatham. We should have gone with the original plan instead of just doing half of the building because I believe now we're going to have to put the other half of the building in to take the, some of the problems out. So there's two, it's twofold. I, I have no problem if somebody's building and can put 12 units on a piece of property comfortably, I don't have a problem with that. If they can only put four on there, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I, I don't want to see a big massive structure somewhere. I'd like to, as long as it's done tastefully, I don't have a problem with that. We, we're gonna, we, the more we go down this road, the more housing we're going to need. So it's, it's tough. Back, back in the 70s, people used to open their, their non-used bedrooms up and rent them out to people. A lot of, a lot of college kids would come down here and for, back then, it was like $25 a week. And for $5 a week, you could get kitchen privileges. If they worked in a restaurant, they could eat, eat there. They, if they worked at the Christopher Rite House, they could eat there. I mean, a lot of them, a lot of them worked at hotels, motels. And that was, that was where a lot of people got their housing because they were only here in the summer. People here, it was a long winter. We never worked year-round in Chatham. A lot of people didn't anyway. And that kind of gave those people an extra boost in the summer. So we've changed all of that. Maybe sometimes we could get back to renting a room out for the summer to a college person. Some ideas like that, instead of just renting houses for people to come here for a week, two weeks. I mean, I'm all for that. This, this town lives on the influx of people in the summer. Without that, there would be a big change in this town.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I actually want to direct this question maybe to the, to the council. If, if we have the, the plan that we have and people start giving us properties to develop, is, is there a point at which the sewers can no longer reach, serve the capacity that we would have, a way to hold that property from being developed until the sewer had adequate capacity? I mean, I, 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 what we're doing now is saying, "We don't have the capacity. We're completely not allowing what we really want here," when it really is going to come in on stages anyway. I just want to know that we're not going to like, "Okay, if, God forbid, everybody did build these out, would we be able to control the development by saying the sewers aren't ready for you to make that property that where it is now? Can we legally do that?"
Well, and thanks, Jay Tallerman, Town Council. Well, there are some means to do that through, but it would have to be through special permitting. Otherwise, obviously, no one's getting a building permit unless that there, unless there's sewer capacity or septic available. So the concerns I have, and so there's ways to control that and condition permits and approvals, that, that can be done. The concerns I have would be treating two different property owners or permit holders different unless we had a very highly developed means of allocating remaining capacity by property, which some towns do. They can get that targeted with respect to this. But certainly sewer capacity determines what's available. Now, I do want to note that if properties have paid a betterment and there's sewer capacity available for them, then they're entitled to it. If they haven't paid a betterment, then, and they front on a road with sewer infrastructure, they're entitled to connect as well, provided there's adequate capacity. If they need an extension, that's a different question. So I know that that's an unsatisfying answer because it, there's a lot of shades of gray, but it, it can be used as a management tool, but there is also some entitlement to sewer in some circumstances. And we also have to be careful about treating different classes of properties differently.
But if, if we, if we get a report back, a more clear report that says, "Right now that, that center can accommodate X amount of, of additional capacity now." And we, as people come in and put in, come before us, we say, "Okay, well, you've used 20%, you've used 20%, you've used 60%. The next one to come in, we have no more capacity for you now."
Well, that, that really would depend upon what the sewer commissioners or the Sewer Department outlines for capacity. It also may depend in some part on whether or not some of those potential users are 40B developers because that has an impact on our ability to control an allocation of capacity under some of the cases. So, but we can't, I mean, we, we could perhaps condition certain things through zoning permits, but we're really not allocating sewer capacity in a bylaw as a whole. But we could pick it up during the permitting condition. We can make it a specific criteria for any special permit. For the byright uses, it gets harder to do. But, I mean, there are tools to kind of manage that, whatever the remaining capacity is. If that's what folks want to do, I would suggest working closely with the Sewer Department on developing bylaws that can, when you're developing bylaws, so you can manage whatever remaining or potential future capacity there is.
Bob, and the other board members. I, I think when I was introducing some of this, I think I wanted to put some of the measures and controls in the planning board. If there were, if we're the special permit granting authority here, we should have the flexibility to deal with that. And that's the reason why I talked about, if we have all, 90% of a site developed as residential and only 10% commercial, that's not something that I would like to see. What controls and what measures in the bylaw should we have so that we can dictate some of that? That's why I was suggesting that we put some minimums in. If we don't have the minimums in, then we're at the mercy of what the applicant is going to try and do. And the other thing is, is I don't think that we want to go to this high degree, percentage-wise, of residential, if we don't have a good balance. I think the other commercial areas have a criteria, and Katie, if you could remind me on this, it's 51% commercial in, in one of the other districts?
No. What I had mentioned was that our definition for an apartment incidental to commercial use.
Oh, okay.
We require that the commercial space is 51%
Okay.
of the developed area.
Right. So to me, there has to be a real good balance associated with that. And I, and, and many of us have been through this development. They're going to take a look at, "Where am I going to get my returns the quickest from the standpoint of this?" And if they use up all the capacity in, in the sewer and the next guy down the road gets screwed, I don't think that's beneficial to how we want to develop the whole Neighborhood Center. It's not about one, two, or three parcels that somebody is going to jump in on. It's, I would, I would like to see a balance on all the parcels that are within this Neighborhood Center because otherwise, why are we doing this? We just going to, going to cater to a couple of early arrivals and then the rest of them are sacrificed until we can get to that point? And I, I'm not sure that's being really responsible for on our part if we're going to actually say, "Well, it's never going to be developed." Well, if you put this out there, there's no control over it unless you remove the zoning and try to, try to turn back two-thirds vote to remove the zoning after you pass it. I think we have to be very cautious the first step into this. There's no reason why we couldn't adjust this density as we go further. I think there's no reason why we couldn't look at this as part of the adjunct pieces to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and all the village centers we talked about, that those adjacencies, that we could look at some different densities there and strictly with residential. that those adjacencies, that we could look at some different densities there and strictly with residential. Those can be an outlier and a development of this further. But the hub still has to be the Village Center. And the Village Center needs to be a real balance. So I'm suggesting that we not push the envelope on this and not just use the neighborhood's, Village, West Chatham Neighborhood Center as the solution and push, push the 12. I think we have to back off of that a little bit. Let's live within the environment of what we have, make an adjustment later or by adding those adjacencies because they enhance then the Village Center rather than, you know, taking away the capacity of it. That, that's, I'm, I'm trying to look a little bit as an engineer and a realist on this. Yes, Frank?
This is in, in support of your position. In, in my prior town in Connecticut, the main street was very important to the town. It was historic. And the problem there was that the, it was be converted into too, too much commercial. And so they, they wanted to keep a balance with, with the residential. So the rule that they actually put in place was that for any housing or structure on, on the main drive, that they would have to be 50/50.
And I'm okay even with fixing something like that rather than a minimum here or something like that. That is, that, then we know there's going to be a balance on every single site. I would love to see a balance on every site rather than 90% in here and then the next site is going to be all commercial. I would like to see a balance as much as possible on that. And the other, the other thing I see is, is once we start working with some of the commercial side of this, it may have an automatic limitation on some of the residential. For example, if there's a restaurant, the parking gets jacked up a little bit. Now fortunately, we've done a couple of things in the bylaw to provide that relief. We talked about shared parking and link parking. That to me is the way we could balance some of that. And we can still get the residential component in. That is all up to us when we do our site plan reviews. We would be able to work with that. And if we set something up like that in this one property, the adjacent property has to somewhat mimic that. They have to join their property to it. They have to share the parking so that it could, very much like our current Town Center is, there's shared parking all the way through the rear. And that, that's what I think is going to help balance this all out on whether one person has a, one developed site has a high amount of parking that's in demand. Again, a couple of, just a couple of thoughts. I'm just trying to not pin us down, but I also want us to have the flexibility to manage this. And I'm not sure I would want to relieve it or push it on the DPW or the town or put it into a legal issue. I think it should be left to the board here on this, that, that we can control this. Once we get it to the point, say 10 years, 15 years down the road, and we think we can do another something different, or we want to do an add-on with the adjacencies to this Village Center and we want to make that a more defined development of just residential, you know, multi, multifamily, I think that would be a great way to go about it. Just, now, I've been thinking about this. I was out there on vacation, of course. I couldn't stop thinking about this. So I, I had to sort of interject first on this. And I, it wasn't my intention to drive the message in here, but I, I thought that it would be important enough that I do lead off with that today. Catherine?
I just wanted to make a comment. I wanted to respond to Charlene's comment about, we do unders, just about that we do understand that the build-out analysis was a maximum. I mean, in general, that is the question that's asked for a build-out analysis. We want to see the maximum. And yes, it's very likely the case that the maximum would not be built. However, my, my response when I reviewed the build-out analysis more carefully is that if the way the zoning, proposed zoning, as we've worded it now, would allow this to be built, which it clearly does, I think we do need to go back to our draft and look at things that would not allow this to be built. Because I do feel this is a significant departure from everything we've worked on and from what our, what our vision of what the West Chatham Neighborhood Center should be. Everything we've worked on, this is a significant departure from that. And so therefore, what we've drafted is not producing what it should be producing. So I do think we need to look at it and introduce some of the things that your chair is suggesting, such as, you know, having the percentage of, and that Mr. Scher confirmed that there's some percentage of how the residential and commercial is mixed. And I do think we need to look at reducing the residential density with the understanding that West Chatham Neighborhood Center is not the solution to our housing problem. It can offer some diversity of housing options, but really, I think we need to look to the, for the bigger solution to the housing problem in Chatham in other areas, in the buffer zones, in town-wide zoning initiatives, and in friendly 40Bs and other on the ground, you know, on-the-ground projects. Just to remember that zoning is sort of, there's many tools in the toolbox to address the housing needs or any particular need that the town might have, which with regard to its built environment. Zoning is one tool in the toolbox. And in my humble opinion, it's sort of the weakest one. It's the wimpiest one in, in the, in the sense that zoning gives an idea of what could be done. It encourages and allows certain types of development or redevelopment, but it doesn't build the things. It doesn't actually do anything. So there are stronger, I, I think more effective solutions that I think the town is already pursuing with great vigor. So anyway, that was just a comment.
Yeah, Charlene, do you have one other thing?
Certainly within the A-zone, and if we need to make the depth of that zone
Yep.
a little bit larger.
Yep.
I, I would not have a concern at all with having, you know, a 50/50 or
Right there.
minimum requirement, or whatever we want to call it for commercial development. Again, it's going to go down to flow as to what you're going to be able to have on each and every parcel.
Right.
Regardless of the size of that parcel. Jay, would we be able to allow for transfer development rights?
Yes, yes. Specifically under the, under the zoning act, you can do transfer development rights through a special permit process.
Do people know what that is?
Please enlighten us.
Okay. So I'm, I'm really Reader's Digest version. You've got a development over here that you want to build more than it, capacity would allow. You purchased the development rights from this parcel over here to be able to do that. And you put restrictions on that other parcel.
Got it, yeah.
So there may be some thought put in that. It has to be in, correct me if I'm wrong, folks, because I've been out of the professional planning biz for a little bit now. But it would have to be within the same zone of contribution
Right, right.
and, and all of that kind of thing. So, you know, something in North Chatham couldn't be used for something in West Chatham. You know, it would have to be within the confines of, of that area. So, you know, there are some, like Catherine said, there are some creative ways to do development. And I think if we did, you know, have a minimum requirement for, or however we want to order for a commercial, and if we, because right now, the depth of the A-zone is only, what, 200 feet?
No, I don't even think it's that much.
Is it only 100?
I think it's 100 feet.
Yeah. So we may want to think about expanding that
Yep, right.
to a bigger depth.
That's an excellent suggestion.
That would allow for the mixed use that we're, we are trying to create. And then if there's ability and, and capacity to build further residential to the rear, that, I think that's a win-win.
Yep.
It's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I just, I do agree. I think extending that zone further depth is, is an excellent thought. And we, we're in November, so, you know, and we're heading towards town meeting. So whatever we do to make this work, we need to make it simple and, and quick. And I'm a little bit worried about doing transfer development rights if that, if that affects.
That wouldn't be included in the zoning at all. It's just something we can do, you know, John Q.
On the side.
Come in, yeah. John Q. Public can come in and say, I really want to build this here, but I need more capacity. So I'm going to buy this and restrict it. Yeah, that wouldn't be part of this. It was more a...
Today, since Town Council is here tonight, is there any other questions that you may want to ask them about, about, you know? I'd like to get through this piece here because there's other things that we may want to revisit with Town Council, but this one might put a little curveball into. I, I don't want to do a speculation on, on Town Council's opinion on it. Let's stick with what we have and where we think we, we need to focus on. But if you have any questions, by all means.
I don't have a question for Town Council.
Okay.
But I have a comment on this.
Okay.
What we're all talking about, right? I think the other thing that we really need to do is, is produce another drawing that's what we think it should be. Because quite honestly, we would never, with the limited control we have now, and I agree, we should have more. But with the limited control now, we would never allow any of that development to take place. There's not enough parking.
Yep.
There's not any recreational areas. There's not any of the things that we think are part of, of the development. So
Correct.
With, with all those things that we want in here, the density is, is likely to be half of what's in here. And I think we need and owe it to the public to say, this is our vision of what's going out there. The other one was what, what is possible, possible but not under our, our leadership.
You're thinking like I was on this. I, I thought what we should do with Union Studios, exactly that point. I, I'm not interested in, in portraying what the maximum is because I think we're in agreement that that's not likely to be the case. I think the vision should look of what the desired site layout would look like with a balance of commercial and residential. And what was it visually be if you do the setbacks off, off of the frontage road on Route 28? Or we desire to have a little bit further setbacks so that there's streetscape there or there's dining areas there that we wouldn't have if you put them right up front? That is allowed, by the way, we've structured this right now. But that is probably what we would pursue with an applicant if they were coming before us. And as soon as you start doing that, well, you're not putting parking or anything else in there. You're, you're our residential. You're just, you're essentially dealing with all the, the aesthetics and the additional pieces. So my suggestion is, I think we have Union Studio coming in on the summer 9th. That's the next meeting, right? These are things that I think we could bring up to them, ask them to structure their illustrations to be what we desire them to be. And then let's make sure that we have some sufficient guidance in the bylaw so that we can create that and manage that as a board and not just rely on some other entities that are going to perhaps put us into a legal quirkbar, which I'd like to avoid. Yes?
I did have a question for Town Council. Can we require shared parking?
Require it? You can certainly allow it, yeah, and...
I know we can allow it.
Right.
But can we require it?
I, I think ostensibly you could. You'd obviously have to examine whether or not with every single parcel in the zoning district, it makes sense. But I don't see a reason why you couldn't. I mean, you'd have to look at it across every single use that's allowed and whether or not it's practical.
Right.
But it's certainly something you could do.
I, I think that's exactly the case. I think an applicant would want to do shared parking because it benefits them from the standpoint, they don't get anything out of putting base pavement down for a parking space.
As long as they have a good neighbor.
Yeah, yeah.
I, it, if I'm a resident in that neighborhood where I don't have a space because they're all shared.
That's true.
I'm not so sure I'd be so happy.
Well, I, I think that's, the site by site does dictate a lot of that oversight that we would provide. I'm not quite sure that everyone's going to want to do it. Like you say, they're going to want to take care of their own, and that's okay. But I, I think that this helps from the standpoint of, of creating that village atmosphere a little bit more. Yeah, one more?
Yeah, I, I think the shared parking is, is important. It's, because, you know, you'd go through town and, except when, you know, it's a big holiday time or something like that, there's lots of spaces that are theoretically for this building or that building
Right.
that are completely empty.
Empty.
And so you can increase the amount of parking available generally by incentivizing, you know, common parking. And maybe there's some sort of incentive we could put into the rules where people get a benefit if they allow
Yep.
the, the parking. That's it.
All right. So there's a couple of things, when I want to take some public input, if there is any. But I do want you to think about this and I'll get back to it. I think I'd like to add another meeting or two to our normal agenda on this. And in discussion with community development staff, the challenge is, it's not really adding a meeting. It's an evening meeting. That's the challenge. If we are going to add any meetings, say in January or February, it's likely to be more in an afternoon meeting than an evening meeting because of, everything seems to be booked up. Is the board members, are, are you open to that? And certainly you can work with some suggested dates through the, through community development staff to see which ones make sense on that.
As long as some of them, we can participate remotely, that's fine.
Yeah. That, that would always be available, I would say, for right now. That's great. Okay. With that, I'd like to open it up for any public comments and I appreciate it if you could hold your comments to about three minutes. That would be helpful to us. Is there anybody on board? Katie?
Rick Levitt.
Rick Levitt. Go ahead, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think this has been one of the better, if not the best, planning board meeting I've ever attended or watched. I think you guys are doing an outstanding job. I'm looking forward to your meeting on the 9th with Union Studio presenting and presenting what West Chatham Center can look like. I think, I know what Union Studio has done in the past, actually building things, designing and building things, that they create exactly the kind of environment, the atmosphere that you guys have been discussing tonight. So bravo, keep at it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Oh. Any other questions for the attorney while we have Mr. Talaman? Catherine?
Yes. I just had a general question. Since you've joined us, Attorney Talaman, I just wanted to ask, this is a more general question that I know is on, has been on the table with regard to West Chatham Neighborhood Center for some time. But we understand there is some new legislation through the state of Massachusetts that may affect what we do in West Chatham, especially with regard to the residential piece. And I wondered if it's premature to ask for your comments on this, that's fine. But I did want to hear your opinion and ask for your comments on this and how it affects us as we move forward.
Well, I think that the biggest piece of legislation that's out there that may affect what you're trying to do and based upon what I saw in the, in the draft bylaw was the requirements for buyright treatment of most, if not all, accessory dwelling units. So as you're developing this or any other bylaw, you should keep that in mind. You should also be thinking about what your current bylaws do with respect to accessory dwelling units. But I... But I would say that how you approach the dimensional requirements, which you can adopt for accessory dwelling units in and around West Chatham, that you give that some, some thought, for sure. That's the biggest new piece. There's a, a few other assorted smaller pieces, but that's the biggest new piece.
Thank you.
If I might.
Sure.
Jay, if, if the zoning that we're proposing actually does not allow for single-family dwellings, would the accessory apartment, um, new legislation impact that?
It, it, no, it wouldn't, in, in my opinion. And it really depends ultimately what your end result accessory dwelling unit bylaw says. Some towns are allowing for accessory dwelling units on duplexes. But otherwise, we take the position that the new legislation only covers instances where it's accessory to a single-family dwelling.
Um, I think we do need to work on our existing accessory apartment bylaw, by the way.
Yes, if I could, through the chair. So staff has begun to look at our ADU bylaw in comparison to what the state is proposing. And we're waiting for some additional guidance from the state. And so once we have that, we can then, we'll likely come to the board to ask for a proposal to amend the ADU bylaw at town meeting.
Okay. All right. So, um, the community development staff is going to reach out to us on dates. I appreciate it. I think we're looking for at least two. Is that right, Katie?
Yes, we're, um, I think we probably need at least, you know, two work sessions. I guess a question that I would have.
Sure.
For the board is whether or not we think, do we need another session before the conversation with Union Studio? Or do we want to have, you know, perhaps start that meeting a little bit earlier and come to some conclusions about what we're looking for from them prior to that meeting? So that's one question.
Well, I know some of the things I heard, especially from you, and I, I was right in, in tune to this. So when you said, let, let's have a visual of what we want it to be, I think that's what the discussion would be with them on December 9th. And we can define it right then and there about what we'd like it to visually look like and have them create it. And let's make sure then, if we wrap our head around, they came back with a visual and says, you know what, this looks pretty good. What do we have to do to make sure that the narrative or the, the ink is consistent with that? And again, as long as we have some control as a board on this, whether we go one way or another, I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure that we have the flexibility as a board to manage that aspect of it as we see things coming in. I really hated it in the past when zoning is sort of silent on this or they get through a change and then all of a sudden it's forced down that we have, oh, we got four apartment units in the back and we, you know, well, it's only allowed to be two, but they got some waiver on it or something. I, I would rather not go down that, that pathway. I'd rather stick with whatever it is that we can control rather than have it circumvent us as a board.
Mr. Chair, if I can.
Yes.
Um, in that regard, I, I personally think it might be helpful for the board either to have another meeting before meeting with Union Studios or just prior, so that we can sit together and think together, what are the essential elements that we'd really like to see in the visuals? So I do think that would be useful. And also just a reminder to the board that the West Chatham Neighborhood Center is in the Historic Business District. And the planning board some years ago adopted the design guidelines of HBDC as our design guidelines. So we might want to take a look at those in connection with the Form Based Code that we've integrated into the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and put it together. And maybe what, a nice way to think about this is, from BSC, we got the maximum built out in terms of quantity of stuff. And, but it's not really what we want. What we want to ask Union Studio Studios is give us the maximum in terms of desirability. What we really want. Quality, yes. What we really want the West Chatham Neighborhood Center to do and to look like. And to be aesthetically pleasing and livable and workable and all of those things.
Are you looking for that to be just before the meeting on the 9th or a separate day before the 9th?
Whatever works, whatever could work.
You, you suggested a meeting, we could even do it before the 9th, just before the meeting?
If, I can just, I will need to confirm room availability and such, but we'll do that this week and then get back to the, to the board members.
Separate meeting might be better.
Okay.
In a way, because there's, then there's a little time.
Yeah.
To pull together a summary of what the boards discussed to present that.
Okay, all right. So that, that'll be our target, something between now and the 9th.
Yeah, I think we do because there's some things that we want to see. And there's some things that we have to agree on, our, our limitations.
Limitations.
I, I totally like the idea of widening the A.
Yeah, that is.
But we have to come to an agreement and tell them.
Yeah.
Okay, now it's this large.
Yeah.
And, and so there are some, we haven't discussed, you know, what percentage is going to be recreation. We haven't discussed parking limits. We haven't discussed bedroom sizes, you know, a few things like that.
Okay.
That we probably should do before they come.
Okay, good. Warren, you had some questions?
Yes. Well, first, just on this subject here, it seems to me that we are still proposing that we be the permit granting authority for special permits.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And that the criteria by which they will be evaluated is still to be developed or fleshed out.
Right.
Completely. But it does seem to me that, given that many of the uses that we're talking about in our use table require a special permit, that as the permit granting authority with, we have a great deal more clout, if you would, or ability to affect the development that would be requesting a special permit than we might in other situations. So I would just say that.
Yep.
And then totally different subject, if I can change it, because I don't know if this is the last chance to bring it up. But with town council here, I mean, for me, my colleagues here will not think it a surprise that I say for me, the elephant in the room is short-term rentals. And if we can't come up with a way that prohibits short-term rentals in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, we're going to have a commercial district and then a bunch of, of short-term rentals. Nobody will live there. It's my understanding from the opinion of town council that that can be done. But we have not done that. It was even proposed by staff at one point that a, in, a way to do that would be to require a special permit for the multi-use developments that would be proposed. And that the criteria that would be used by this board to evaluate a special permit request for a multi-use or multi-family facility could very clearly define that it has to restrict short-term rentals. It has to be year-round accommodations. And that would be a very quick way to, quote, fix what I think is a fatal flaw in any of our developments, is to require a special permit rather than permitted by right for a multifamily unit in our use table. But the whole issue of restricting short-term rentals has never been discussed completely, or if at all, other than my saying it's a concern of mine. And the more I have reflected on it, as you have on your time off, the more I realize that there are many incentives that are going to push towards as many units as possible that can be owned by corporations or owned by individuals and with the intent of maximizing their, their revenue flow. And we do not end up adjusting or addressing the principal objective, which was to create some more moderately priced housing for those who wish to live in Chatham, because there isn't any. And that's the issue for me. And the way I had seen proposed was to make a special permit as a requirement for the multifamily developments in multi-use, I guess, as well, in our use table. When then have the discussion about what are the criteria that this board is going to always apply to everybody in this entire West Chatham Neighborhood Center. No favor to them, it's, you know, that's, you know, what we'll, what we will base the assessment of whether to grant a special permit or not. But anyway, that subject, I would love to have discussed. And actually, I would love to have some input from the board as to whether a special permitting might be more appropriate than permit by right, which is what we have in the use table as we speak. So that's my comment.
Catherine, please, by all means.
I just wanted to comment, we actually have discussed this at length and we have received opinions from our previous town council about how to approach it. We've also received opinions from our previous planner and our housing director, Gloria McPherson, on how to approach it. One suggestion that has been made in the past is that it's problematic to apply any standard to just one zone in town, that a town-wide rule or regulation or provision in the bylaw regarding the restriction of year of seasonal rentals is something that's more appropriate. But I think the best thing to do is to ask Jay for his opinion that if we do want to address this issue of seasonal occupancy or seasonal rentals and restricting that, what is, what would be your recommendation for the best way legally to do that?
So, it's a sticky issue, especially on the Cape and the islands, and a little bit in the far western part of the state as well, where rental of units is kind of a necessary component of the local economy and also is the engine that keeps some people able to keep their homes. That said, there's a lot of pressure on it. Under the, the two notable cases, the Nantucket case and a, and the other, a, the case called Styler, and I believe that's from Linfield. Technically, if you don't say anything about short-term rentals, they're just, they're not permitted, except in the sense that they are maybe permitted general business in the district that they're in because they're not determined to be residential. You could prohibit them in a specific zone if you so desired. You may want to address whether or not you're going to allow them in the other zones for consistency. And then there's other safeguards, obviously, including safeguards outside of zoning altogether in terms of licensure and things like that that can be done. But you certainly have the tools under zoning to choose where and how you might allow them. In some districts, you could allow special, by special permit or site plan review or by right. There's any number of means arising under zoning to regulate either across town or district by district, short-term rentals.
May I ask?
Sure, sure.
Am I understanding you correctly to say that basically they are prohibited everywhere? So everywhere in Chatham that somebody's offering a short-term rental, it's actually prohibited? Is, is that, am I wrong in that understanding?
I don't want to be, I don't want to be alarmist, but the cases suggest that short-term rentals are not single-family housing. Now, it depends upon whether or not someone might consider a short-term rental an occasional accessory element of someone's residency. Or if it's the predominant use of that house, which is pretty prevalent on the Cape, as you know. So if, if I live in a house and I do a short-term rental twice a year, you know, for a couple of weeks, I don't think that would be illegal. I would say that would be better termed as accessory to the primary single-family residential use. If I rented my, that same house for 40 weeks a year, I would say that that would be prohibited because it would be a business and not a single-family use, provided that that business isn't allowed in that district. So it really depends on exactly what you want to do. You do have the right to even prohibit it as an accessory use altogether, if that's what you want to do. So my point is that, and the cases suggest this, that where you don't regulate it, if it's the predominant use of a single-family house, that use is no longer single-family. It's a business use that, you know, for, um, short-term rentals. But Chatham is not alone in towns, among towns, including on, in towns on the Cape that are trying to figure out how their future with short-term rentals is going to be written. And people are catching up to that regulation now. And in other areas, they're not doing it through zoning at all, but they're regulating it kind of through another process, through licensure or registration processes. But yeah, I mean, technically, if you, any of us rented our house for 40 weeks a year as a short-term rental, it ceases to become a single-family house in terms of use. That's what the cases state.
Okay.
Frank Scher?
I, I read that Nantucket case with great interest and, and the Skyler case. And I'm not admitted in Massachusetts, so I'm deferring. But we, those involve both purely residential districts. Is that, that's my recollection. Is that correct?
Right. Or that particular use. I think that the point of those is that if that particular use isn't described or allowed in the district.
Right, right.
Most bylaws state unless something is expressly allowed, it's expressly prohibited.
Yes, I, I, and I, my, my, before I even was aware of those cases, I thought that it was pretty clear if somebody was in the business of renting their home in a residential district, that would not be a proper use within a residential district. So the cases seem to be coming down that way. I am concerned that Chatham has allowed short-term rentals in residential districts. And in fact, in a way, has approved it because we have our health regulations and registration regulations, et cetera. So I think we may be in a position, and I'd like you to react to this, of, of not relying just on our, not saying anything, but actually coming out and specifying what we think about short-term rentals in various districts.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not a topic, it's a legal case.
If I could, I just like, if we're talking about short-term rentals in relation to West Chatham, I think that's fine. As we're talking about short-term rentals in general, I think we're getting away from the agenda topic and I would caution against that. I do think that we need to further that discussion. We've talked about it internally. We've talked about it, you know, you know, even as early as today with town council. It's something that, you know, we know that needs, we need to look at.
Okay.
However, I just want to caution from today's standpoint, the discussion shouldn't remain around West Chatham.
Absolutely, agreed. So focusing just on the West Chatham. Do you think that we should specify how short-term rentals are handled? And can we do that legally?
I mean, if that's a question for me, you 100% could do that legally if you wanted.
With or without a special permit. We could just state it.
You could just state it. I mean, that's one end of the spectrum.
Okay, thank you.
Absolute prohibition without qualification, yes.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Well, that, that actually clarifies a few things, doesn't it, board members?
That clears up a very big issue that, you know, there's been some misunderstanding about, so that's great. And just to clarify, we can specify it, and if we don't specify it, it is prohibited. Sort of the default position is it's not allowed unless we say it's allowed.
Yeah, what I would say is, it's unclear if you don't specify it. It's in the same boat as every other house in Chatham. As the cases develop and as towns develop mechanisms to deal with it, you know, we'll look at it. But those cases are quite clear on the subject.
Okay, great.
I would suggest that this, since we have a little bit of clarity here, this could be something in one of the workshops that. this could be something in one of the workshops that we would use this as a focus point. I think it warrants just doing that. And I'm, I'm always concerned about just doing something in just this zone and in West Chatham and no place else in town. I think, I think I would like input from, from Katie and others about, you know, and maybe Gloria about where we're going with this townwide at the same time that we have that discussion. But I would just like to be careful about that aspect of it and not.
I have a, a thought. I, I don't know how it will be received, but should we have goals and objectives for next year? The, the things we're going to focus on. And obviously, it's the neighborhood, it's ADUs, maybe it's short-term rentals. But, you know, have, have a list of topics that we're going to address.
We, we usually do, but I'm new on this, in this position. So that's something I'll put on my tasks of things to, to outline and suggest. I think I'll take something from what Catherine has done in the past.
One, one possibility, if I could throw out a thought.
Can we finish with the?
Yeah.
I thought we were.
I'm sorry, I still have one more question.
Let's finish, if I could just make a comment. Usually, often also, you prepare an annual report for the Town Manager and Select Board and the public. And usually, in that report, we also have an outline of our goals and actions for the coming year. So there's actually a formal procedure to do that, but excellent point.
Can I get Jay?
Yeah, absolutely.
One, one last thing, because it, it occurred to me that we do have existing single-family homes in this district and some of them may already be set up as short-term rentals. Does that make it more difficult for us to put that into the zoning law? Other than trying to get the votes? I mean, I'm talking about legal issues later on and things like that.
Not, not, not legal issues, because it's not like it's an allowed use. So there's no grandfathering of uses that aren't allowed.
Okay.
So there, so not legally. I mean, in terms of passing town meeting, maybe, but legally, no.
That's, that's good to know. All right, if, if we're done with this for tonight, not yet, but I'll entertain them. Any other discussion points before we make a motion to go?
Well, I just, what is the process under which we would?
Okay, go ahead.
Do goals and objectives for next year. How, how has that evolved?
Let me look at that, okay? I have to do my own homework, all right? And then I'll, I'll, I'll bring it to the board, maybe on the meeting on the night.
Could I comment, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Go ahead.
If I could comment, what we've done previously is usually the chair will have a discussion with the board.
Okay.
And then we determine our priorities. And usually, but you usually have a list of our to-do list, which has already been established and.
And that's what I'll do. I'll, I'll make the to-do list. It's probably going to be longer than what our goals can be, possibly be, but.
Yeah.
I just, on the timeline that was given to us, and thank you for that. I'm a little confused on the February 24th, 2025, that that is the, the last date we can schedule this?
I asked that same question today.
Because the 65 days is from the date it's referred to the Planning Board from the Board of Selectmen.
Correct. That, that would be probably an early date. We probably could go later than that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I think what I wanted to do on that is, I like to push. My goal would be to actually push us. That's why I want to add a couple of meetings. I want to push us. Let's resolve these things. And we can do that, I think, by getting together. That's a target date. If it has to slip a week or so, I think I talked with staff and they said there's a little bit of flexibility there. But I said, let's just put that in as our starting point. That's our target.
But I just don't want people, especially who are not familiar with the process, to be confused by that.
Thank you for clarifying. This whole thing is adjustable week to week. This is just sort of my plan for things that I think can make us work.
Speaking of adjustable, Mr. Chairman? So your scheduled meetings for December right now are December 9th and December 23rd.
Right.
We, right now, have one item that was submitted for December 23rd that we could actually put on the December 9th meeting. My question, and then we also have a request from Penrose, who will be the developer for the 40B, to come in to discuss their proposal in an informal way with the board, because technically, it will go through the process through the Zoning Board of Appeals. But as a courtesy, come to the Planning Board to, to explain the project and, and, you know, perhaps get some input that they can come back, you know, take back and to inform their final design with the ZBA. They're not available on the 23rd. We were wondering if the board members would be willing to meet on December 16th at 6:00 PM to hear that proposal. And in that, in turn, we would actually then cancel the meeting on December 23rd. Or have an extra one available if folks decided that they wanted to meet that week.
I would rather have both on the schedule, just because I think we're going to need them.
16th works for me.
Yeah.
Works for me.
We're just, we're going to say we're going to do both the 16th and the 23rd, 9th, 16th.
Right now. Let's reserve the dates so that, it seems like we have plenty of things to go into and we can focus a certain topics for each date. But if we don't have a date set, we won't get a room. We won't be able to. So if the board's okay, let's keep both dates for now.
Okay.
And then we'll, I'll try to work out with staff what we should focus each of these workshops on. Does that work? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Now, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn the meeting and wishing everybody a very happy Thanksgiving.
And I second that.
Okay, then we'll take a roll call vote. Catherine, help her.
Yes, I approve we adjourn.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Worschafter?
Approve.
Charlene Greenhoff?
Approve.
Frank Scher?
Approve.
Bob Dubis?
Approve.
Art Spru, and I approve. And it is 7:54.
7:54?